...communities as to whether they permit it or not. And I don't want to be like everybody around us, but I think it is helpful to me to have concerts.
We're unique.
We are unique. And we have to decide whether we want that to be part of our uniqueness or not part of our.
We looked at Corin Township, Not Healthy, Forest Park, Springfield Township.
How do those communities?
Glendale, Springdale. We looked at six or seven kind of all this kind of clustered part of, I think Wyoming as well. And for the most part, every single one of them do not allow them in the front yard. Some allow them in the side and rear, some ban them altogether. The only community that allows them in the side yard, I'm sorry, let me take it back. No community allows them in the side yard except for Corin Township. But that's linked to the width of the lot. So basically they're saying if you're on a bigger lot, they can put it in your side yard. Most of the communities allow them in the rear yard. One of the communities didn't allow them anywhere. None of them allowed them in the front yard.
Can you clarify what a side yard is? Is the side yard actually just stuff from the front corner of the house?
Yeah, if you take the front part of the house, you go beyond that and that's an outside.
From the front corner of the house is then considered a backyard.
That's the side yard. And then you have the rear yards when you get beyond the rear of the house.
What if you go on that beside your yard?
Well, listen, I live in a house that has, I front on three streets, so there's everyone, all the rules don't always apply and fit every property exactly. So there are cases where you have to, someone has owned administrative building, official has to make an exception.
So a person will have to go before the zoning administration and get special dispensation?
Well, maybe. I think that the municipal manager and the building official would look at the regulations and try to figure out how that fits to your lot. And hopefully, they would make a fair decision. If they made a decision on what you were unhappy with, then you could appeal that to Board of Zoning Appeals. In fact, anyone, again, if these regulations were adopted, any person could go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and ask for special dispensation.
So if the board says no, I get to appeal to the board so they can say yes?
No, court appeals.
No, no, no. Okay. This is the planning commission. They are the ones who recommend the code, the council approves it. But in any case where you need a variance, meaning you need to vary some regulation, compliance with some regulation, there's a Board of Zoning Appeals which is a separate board. And they would hear your appeal. And they would decide whether or not you can do it or not. And if they said you cannot, then you're, if you wanted to appeal that decision, you would go to court.
My name is Lyndon Bass. I live at 21 Joywood. It's one of those places where most of my yard is greenbelt. And I don't have any backyard. So, but I do join right up to many ones. My 33-foot motorhome is sitting in my driveway. The bulk of my driveway is already on the greenbelt. And the bulk of my driveway is behind the front of my house because my garage is that location. So that's my situation. Just wanted to let you know where I'm coming from so you can see the bias in it. But I've lived in this school district since 1958. We were fortunate enough that this house finally came on the market after we looked at it for 30 years, just in 2008. And we moved into the village in 2009 when I was transferred back here from Florida. We were stationed with my company. I just think that the intention of all of this is wonderful, but I think it's overreaching. I think it's too much minutia, it's too much in our face. And the reason we choose to live in Green Hills is because it's not like these other communities. And, you know, it's sort of a live and let live, neighbor help your neighbor kind of place. And that's where we all want to be. People call it Mayberry. It is. In Mayberry, they don't tell you where your fence can be. You know, and they sure don't tell you that you can have your travel trailer or your motorhome or the lady's pop-up sitting in her driveway. I mean, where is she supposed to put it? So the idea that we're going to grandfather in things that are attached, but we're going to change the rules for people who have already invested their money to move here, and God knows they can't get it back because the property values in Green Hills are not going up. Anyway, Sid, we have bigger fish to fry in this. We're in a downtown area that is falling to disrepair. And I don't know why we're arguing about things like why your motorhome is in your driveway. When we have an area in the core of our village, we talked about historic preservation. Let me tell you, I love the people here and I love the attitude here. I'm embarrassed to rent people here as a downtown area. It's embarrassing. And I, you know, I've lived here so long that I know what it used to be like. When I was first married, we lived in a four-ferret. I could ride my bike over with my basketball, I'd go shopping and get my week's groceries, go to the bakery, go to the butcher store, go to the grain grinder, and go to Albert's or IGA and come home. And now you can't do any of that stuff. And so why are we worrying about things like the minutia just because it's time to review the zone, you know, to review the zoning? Why are we into the minutia and trying to get too restrictive of people who really don't have the option to move away anymore because of the property situation? I mean, we shouldn't change the rules. And we don't have any business telling people what vehicle they can park or where they can park it. And thanks for doing the work. Just chill out.
Hi, my name is Judy Hopps. And I'm just, you have to, I think the overall problem with Green Hills and the whole vehicle situation is Green Hills was developed at a time when families had one car, they relatively had one car, and one garage. Well, now we have multiple cars, we still only have one garage, one driveway, and there's an excess. That's, I would like to suggest that Green Hills thinks of an alternative of either yes or no as far as where these things could go and possibly find a place where they could go. It seems like we have an awful lot of open space behind the high school. I don't know what story is with Johnny's Toys, but there's a lot of parking space over there, too. I don't know if something couldn't be created to help people find a spot to park their boats, their RVs, their whatever, put up a nice privacy fence that, you know, wouldn't be too distasteful. And that would give people a place to put their, their vehicle without having it in their driveway, kind of a halfway ground, that's one point. And the second point is, yes, we do have a problem with a lot of vehicles. On my street alone, I know there are, is four banned, I know, again, how we determine these. These are cars that don't have any air in their tires and have outdated plates that are sitting in somebody's driveway and they're not being used. They haven't moved for three years. And the house right next to them is for sale. Who in the world is willing to buy that house with this trash next door? Now, abandoned, I don't know. They probably have the title to them, but they certainly aren't going anywhere. And they make the place look bad. And I think that is, that is a problem. And we have people on our street that I think he bought the corner lots in because it gives them four parking spaces that they can put their box trucks. And I have photos that I've taken complete with all their lumber and everything else that they're going to do their business that day with. And it makes terribly, it's unsightly with the beautiful area we have right by the junior high school that is lovely to look at if you didn't have to look through that truck. So I think, yes, it's a touchy situation, but I think there are a whole lot of factors that need to be considered. Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Can I add on to that real quick?
Certainly.
With, with, with the idea of, of the RVs and all the boats being parked in driveways, in my opinion, they still have to be legally tagged. They would still have to have proper registration every year.
Well, I think that, yeah, that goes without saying.
Or they would be abandoned, or they would be seen as abandoned and yanked.
And this is one of the minutia bits that we're addressing in this as well as the village center. You know, we, I understand, all the RV, all the RV supporters, please raise your hand. Okay. I understand why you're here. Thank you. Message received. And that's, and that's okay. But, you know, I, you know, I want to let you all know the reason we're having this hearing, the reason we put this RV regulation in here was to elicit these comments. So, next.
Hi, my name is Stacy Clemens, and I live at 14 Happy Bridge. And I also own a pop-up camper. And I only have one driveway. I have no garage, and we have two vehicles. My camper is only parked in my driveway for three months out of the year. I have homeowner's insurance that covers it. If I park it somewhere other than my driveway, my homeowner's does not cover that. So with that being said, I don't think it's quite fair to a lot of these people that don't have the opportunity to park it somewhere other than their driveway, to have to pay and worry about their homeowner's insurance and other things with that particular vehicle. I don't, I don't think it's fair for a community to say what you can and cannot park on your own property that you pay taxes and your own mortgage for.
On the legal tag.
If somebody wants to pay my mortgage, then they can tell me where I need to park my vehicle. But that is my property and I own it. So until somebody else tells me further that by law I'm not allowed to park it there, then my trailer will stay in my driveway. As far as the other vehicles that are on the street, there are people that park in their driveways. I know you said it was a mobile unit and it had to be moved within 48 hours. Well, there are vehicles in people's driveways that have not moved in months. And they have the perfect opportunity to park two cars in that driveway that is their driveway, but they don't because they have a vehicle parked there that does not work. So therefore, they park on the street, which gives other people no parking spots that need to park on the street. I believe Green Hills was developed with on-street parking. So unless there is some kind of temporary spot in Green Hills for people to park their non-working vehicles, or their vehicles that aren't maintained, or as you put it, what was the word that you said?
Expired license plate.
Expired license. Then it's not fair to the people. I think we should all take our campers and go and park them in Johnny's parking lot and let them sit there so that everybody on Litten Road can drive by and look how junky that is. I mean, that goes for as far as the business on the corner of the commons that has junk cars that have sat there for months that don't move. I'd like to know what kind of permit they have or what their business rules or regulations are that they are allowed to have that junky area when my camper looks perfectly fine in front of my well-groomed yard that I pay for as a citizen of Green Hills. I think it is an outrage that we even consider something to a community that does not have access to any place else to put their vehicles. Thank you.
Can I just add for, just for the pleasure of the room here, there are two, in addition to the RV regulation, there is a regulation that deals with inoperable vehicles. That does not exist in, it sounds like that's something that, there is some more.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing a strong voice for regulations.
That's 9.9.
All right.
It's a good, it's a long way to force.
Dodge tried that forever, it was over there. He got it.
About the RVs?
She's here, she goes up.
I'm very sympathetic to the pop-ups, the smaller. And so I'm, in my head, I'm talking about these vehicles that take up a whole driveway and hang over on the curb is one thing. So is size involved in this is the question.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Not it.
All right. And then I'm, this sounds so petty, but we're referring to the high school. Are you talking about a white community building?
I believe that's what they're saying. And actually, it is a high school right now because there's an alternative school.
But they also have 3rd to 8th grades, there I'm hearing.
No.
There's a special, there's a special other kind of classes over there. It doesn't matter, but for some people, that doesn't represent the high school building. And the old high school building is the middle school. I think I'm right on that. So when you started talking about the high school, I thought you were talking about the old Green Hills High School.
Yeah, all, all the school district properties belong in the school district, they don't belong in the village. So, you know, we've got not much we can do with them.
But I meant, when you labeled them and what you were talking about, I was seeing the old high school building and thinking you were coming with whole hill arms backing up and going through the woods.
No, ma'am.
Okay, as I said, it was petty, but.
Hi, I'm Maria Walker Wheeler, and I live on Litten Road. And two points that I wanted to bring up. One of the substantial amount of citizens were actually afraid to come forward here and state their address. They were concerned the fact that if they were to express their concerns, that somehow I was going to be taken against them. And I want to tell you that that was sole perception of the citizen. Second, in my personal opinion and view, this seems to be very comprehensive. And I'm almost reluctant to say that we're voting for X amount of people to have an impact on such a large group of people. I don't feel very comfortable with it. I almost feel like it's necessary to have a public vote on that so the residents, the citizens, the taxpayers really can voice their opinion on that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Lynch. I live at 847 Brady Lane. I have a ski slope driveway and no side yard. I own a camper, it's my tiny pop-up. It is a hybrid camper, I don't know what they are. My entire adult life, I have owned a house in Green Hills. I got married at 20 and wanted to live in this community because it's not like everyone else. I don't wish to live in Corinne, Glendale, Wyoming. You don't want your try and mirror. I wonder, we keep talking about the historic presence of Green Hills, and to me, the biggest historic difference that this community is, is not the buildings. I moved here because of how my house is historically looking. It's because of the people. It's because it's the neighborhood where I can have people go camping with. And it's a community where it's blue collar. We are working family. We cannot afford expensive vacations. We can afford to take our children camping. And the idea that we're being saved route, I just find atrocious. I also look at, I have a driveway, my camper is actually parked to my mother at 21 Joywood because of my ski slope that I have with a huge hill that it won't stay. And if I choose to not use my driveway, and I understand that parking on the street is an issue where there's not a basis, it's my right as a citizen to also park my car on the street. I find it mean that we're looking at this and if I have a camper in my driveway, it means I'm not using my driveway. And truth, what I, my use of my driveway is my business and not the community's. I think that you need to consider what you realize from people. You're telling us that Green Hills is not something they're to because it's like every other community.
My comment on the, on the research, on the research with comparing us to other communities was just to find out what the sense of other things were.
I understand, but we're heat signing that other communities don't allow this. Other communities have it this way. Other communities allow parking here. And truth, you're trying to conform us to other communities instead of letting us.
I'm not trying to conform anybody.
Well, why are we comparing then?
Because I wanted to know what was going on in other communities. Are we different?
Because we compare.
And is, is it worth being different?
Yes.
That's wrong? Yeah. I may get to that same.
I understand the verbatim or the spin.
I didn't want to make a decision in a vacuum when I didn't know what was going on in other communities. And I didn't think it was fair to other people not to look and see what other communities are doing.
My name is Christine Cardwell. I live at 36 Burley Circle in the newly designated historic district.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Okay. But there seems to me, just sitting back there, that there's going to be some, a lot of changes coming to my residence.
Not necessarily, no.
No?
No, all these are, all these regulations do, in chapter 18 in particular, puts in a framework for the possibility of that happening.
Correct. But the National Historic Registry, there are certain restrictions on it.
No, that is not correct. And, well, go ahead with your comments and I'll let Beth to address that some more just again.
Well, I was under the impression that to be a historical residence, it had to conform to a certain color scheme.
No.
Like you paint my house neon pink.
Your neighbors might not like you, but you're welcome to.
You don't mind neighbors, huh? Okay, so I will stay corrected. I, you know, assume that there was going to be changes to my residence, and I sort of need to conform to those. So I will wait and see what comes out of that.
My other thing is I am an RV owner.
Okay.
I did take the time today when I found out about this to drive around every street in Green Hills. There are no RVs parked on driveways that block sidewalks. There are no RVs, in my eyes, that are lighted, they're not falling apart, they are well-maintained.
We can talk about that later.
Am I one of them?
No.
But, you know, I am one of only two houses on Burley Circle, 130-some houses, that has the ability to park the RV on the side of the house. No one else on my street except one other person will have that ability. So, and like a lot of other people, we camp, we have six camping trips. I cannot drive my camper all the way out to Batfield, which is where I will leave the store, because I cannot afford the store in somewhere else. You know, driving an hour and a half to pick up my camper and bring it back in, to take it out, to bring it back in. You know, I mean, we go camping with these people twice a year, you know. So, you know, parking that away from us is something that you really need to adhere to.
I just have one more question for you.
Listen.
You mentioned something about 50, minimum of 50% transparency in front of what?
From the storefronts.
Okay. So you are able to see through.
Well, the, the, there's, there's one shop in the village.
Yes.
All night, but it's totally covered.
We know what I'm talking about.
Okay. So, but the move says it shall be, I doubt it, there's some sort of, I don't want to be exact. Say it. Otis in the B.C. Village District shall provide 50% transparency. My question was, is that a minimum or maximum? And it's, it's a minimum of 50%. But I didn't want somebody to say, well, I'm just going to cover just 50%.
Right. Okay. I was, I was wondering if we were thinking about.
Or, or that you could do six.
Well, you can do six. Right. Beth, do you want to address, and I figured that might, it might be a point of controversy to address the issue of colors and all that kind of stuff.
First of all, we need to stay between listing in the National Register and local designation in accordance with zoning code. And the, the oldest part of Green Hills has been a National Register district since 1988. And referring to this, this area is on here. Everything that was built through 1938 was included in that district when it became 50 years old. So, so if you live in Burley Circle, you've been living in a National Register historic district, you have to have been knowing it because there are no regulations connected with it. The National Register does not control local building permits, alterations, demolition, any of that. Those permits come from, at, from the local level. So, National Register does provide some financial benefits, which are purely voluntary and like preservation easements and tax credits for the utilization of income-producing properties, and some protection from federally funded or permitted projects federally, as you are required to take into consideration the impact that they have on properties that are listed in the National Register or eligible. What we're discussing tonight is a new chapter in the zoning code that would enable local designation to occur based on certain criteria. And along with that local designation, there would be design guidelines that would be developed for that district. And so amending the zoning code to simply enables that, it doesn't actually designate the community. And at the time of designation, if it occurs, there would be public notification, there would be public hearings, there would be public input into some guidelines. And the guidelines would be, that would be developed would be those that the community would live with. And there's numerous communities, including the city of Cincinnati and the little Glendale that have local designation, but they don't really paint color because it seems like the first thing that people think of that they don't want. And paint is not common. It can always be changed, so it doesn't actually destroy the, the fabric. So that's, that doesn't need to be an issue unless you want to.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Did you get the answer that you wanted?
I know, sort of.
Sort of got it?
Well, I mean, I kind of heard that, yeah, they, you guys could. You could do, you could do it if you wanted to.
What they're saying is you couldn't own a storehouse, say, and put the giant glass veneer front on the front, near the front side of the mall.
That's what we're saying, that you could. But you could, but you were going to.
You could do it right now.
You can do it right now, yes.
Like one house on Burley Circle already did. When they modernized it back in the 60s. You couldn't do that now.
You could.
You can do it right now.
If the code goes through.
If this, if this were to pass.
No, no.
No.
What this chapter is, and I'm sorry, maybe.
Maybe a male voice. I'm against the historic preservation in Green Hills. We're trying to preserve buildings that are ready to fall down, that need to be.
I don't want to now argue with you about that.
So that's, that's a different issue.
But just make sure you understand.
You should all for it.
I'm making no assumptions. The, the, this chapter, if it's adopted, would allow local districts to be approved at a later date. But.
By who?
By the village planning commission and village council. However, any such district would be accompanied by a set of guidelines. The guidelines would say what you can and what you cannot do.
That's what I'm saying. But that's what we're saying.
No, no.
But you help make the rule.
But on one person, do you think everybody on Burley Circle is going to agree? My neighbor has photographs for window treatments, okay? Not everybody agrees on what is normal.
Well, that's all right. We're not here to have a debate per se about this. We're just here to hear your comments about specific features of this, this document. So I'll take that as a don't like chat or eighteen.
My name is Pam Porcher, I live in 58 Lunden Drive. I also am an RV owner. I also own, oh, I say that before. Mr. Mayor, as you know, I've owned RVs since I moved to this village in 1939. I am in my second home. I have owned something since I moved here. Now, I keep hearing 1967 was the last time things were changed. I beg to differ with that. I stood before council in the year 2000 because at that time, things got pretty heated because this RV incident was brought up at that time. I remember Josh about myself staying here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
It was being proposed at that time.
And it was civil.
A potential, a potential change was being proposed.
Correct. And we went through that and we got it all worked out. And I had the mayor, I had the village manager and everybody over at my house because I was told that I had to have a concrete pad for it in my yard. Because, you know, I have the steepest driveway in all of my lives on earth. And you know that because you've been to my house and I've been to your house before. I now have an even larger trailer because we are retiring in December. One of the reasons I do not store my trailer in other places other than my yard is, as people will tell you, is if you have the amount of money invested that I have, you will get broken into. You will have rodents. And I've been through that. And I'm sorry, I. And I'm sorry, I own something that my husband and I have worked for for most of our adult lives. This is something that we plan on sharing in half the year. We don't keep something in our house year-round. This is something we wanna stay in while we're gone. And I have a lot of money invested in this. And if somebody break into it or someone having rodents in it, this is one of the reasons why we chose to keep this in our house. So I did what the village told me to do. I had everybody out of my house, they showed me what I had to do. Where the side of my house is, had to be beyond the front corner of the house, alongside, I had a pad there. Well, the problem I'm running into now is anything that's parked in your backyard has to be three feet down, three feet from the fence line, according to these news outlets. Well, I did what the village told me to do, but now I won't be three feet, three feet, three feet. Nor will I be allowed to park within the village. So now I have a useless pad, and I can park anything in the village Green House. One thing that Mr. Dries said that I thought was really nice was that Green Hills is a unique area. That's true, because we live right next to Wynton Woods. And all of our, all the time I lived here, Green Hills Council has encouraged me to support the park. I can walk right out my, my door, you know, in a matter of seconds, be right down the end of that street, cut through the back of Beachwoods Elementary School or whatever that gets called now, and be at that campground. Because the whole premise of this, this neighborhood, not Colrain or Wyoming or anything, is we are Wynton Woods. And we are here to support that park. And we do. And that's why so many of us take advantage of that park. And, you know, we are a working-class community. I can't park other things in my driveway, because as, as many of you know, come, come pull in my driveway. All the time.
Thanks. Thanks, Pam.
All right.
Appreciate it. All right, who's next?
Could I ask a question? Just, just one question for the board.
Sure.
Who of you have a motor, have a motorhome, or an RV, or a boat at your residence?
Two boats, three motorcycles.
Where are you gonna put yours?
Boats in the garage.
All the garage.
Well, nothing else in there, we're posting motorcycles.
You have two boats in your garage?
Yeah.
Cadets?
Why, canoe and kayak, yeah. I've had, I kept a sailboat in there.
So nobody owns their...
For a number of years, too, so... Yeah, had two car rides.
Yeah, in the nice part, in the new part.
All right. More?
Terry?
Terry?
I'm Terry Trynen, and I live at thirty-seven Wood Street. I'd like to thank the commission for putting the draft of this code online, I think it's accessible to all of our citizens. But I do have a problem with only ten days notice for, I mean, I'd like to take a look at it, actually understand and read a hundred and seventy-one pages of what is pretty technical information. So I am hoping that we're gonna have a period of time for citizens to write in or email in some comments on this. What is that hearing?
Yeah, I, you know, our, I guess our belief is that we will hold, the planning commission will hold another meeting in, in some timeframe to discuss what we've heard tonight, decide whether or not we wanna make any changes. And there, there's another public hearing before. And then, then, you know, whatever we recommend to council, and I can't imagine, I really don't know when that'll happen, but, but then council has to set a public hearing, also.
Well, I know that you've opened, you've opened this to people who can come to the meeting, that they could drop off comments.
Oh, absolutely.
It's on the web, it says on the website that you're welcome to email...
So how long is that experience for people to be able to drop things off? And then have you considered it? And are you gonna have another hearing yourself? Or are you just gonna incorporate changes and then send it off to council?
I know we're going to be meeting again to take, to discuss what we've heard here tonight from the public, and also our own comments that we've made earlier, and fine-tune this before it moves on in, in any approval process.
But people are just now realizing that this thing's out there, and they're just now reading it, and they wanna get comments.
Well, and that's fine, I mean, council has to provide thirty-day notice before their public hearing anyway, so, you know, I get the...
And the fastest we could do it would be in forty-five days.
Yeah.
Fairly, and it's more likely than it'd be...
We're moving just be the government here.
Seventy-five days.
So it's not to move to council at...
They, you know, we might go to council in July. That, that'd be my guess.
So then you'll have several weeks for people to...
Yeah, there's, there's plenty of time. You know, we're not trying to push this down anybody's throat, that's why I've been talking about it, you know, and written about it in the journal, that, you know, some of these features, we're kind of, but I'm the first person here. So, you know, none of this should be a surprise, the document has been available. If people wanted electronic copies, put it out on the website now. And, you know, please take, load up the guns and take a shot at it.
Well, you know, I've read through the entire document, I think there's a lot of work that still needs to be done on it and tweaking. And I think there are a lot of instances where we are going to make things non-conforming. And the problem with non-conforming is, once you wanna do something to your home residence, your privacy fence rots down and you have to replace it, then you will have to conform. And I think we need to look at some of those places that I've found myself where it's...
Well, if you've got, and, and I suspect you've got a list...
Oh, you're gonna get a hundred and seventy-one pages of red lines from me.
Turn it on, bring it on, please.
No, you are prepared for that.
It won't be the first time you do it.
And maybe a little clarification, one on the satellite dishes. My daughter, Todd, you had said something about the law. The way the code's written right now, anything that's under thirty-nine inches, which is one meter, is exempt from any of the regulations you have written here. So does that mean a standard satellite dish, which is somewhere around twenty-four to twenty-six inches, can be in a front yard? And how many can be in a front yard?
Yes, it can be. It's, we're governed by federal law on this, am I correct?
Yeah, FCC says anything under one meter is exempt, you cannot regulate it whatsoever.
Okay, so we can...
The satellite, the satellite industry...
Satellite dishes on the front of someone's house.
You can, the satellite industry...
We have FCC for that.
I mean, we, I mean, believe me, I'm not defending it.
My neighbor's got four.
I think their techy is already out, we're putting them on the spot.
Next person.
But those are the federal regulations that exist.
Well, that was... That's unfortunate.
It is quite...
And then, the last thing that I'd like, like to talk about is something that Mr. Willard touched on, and that is the village center idea. I too agree that it is far-reaching. And while Mr. Willard is concerned, concerned about most of what's being added on the east side of Wynton Road, I'm concerned about what's being added on the west side. Pretty much everything from Damon Road down to Cromwell entrances into Wynton is being added. Those currently are all residential areas, R1 and R2, and they're going to be made into open business areas. So we are gonna have the potential of having a forty-four-foot-tall building sitting on any of those corners, directly adjacent to residential areas. Which means we're gonna have loud air conditioning units handling commercial spaces. It means we're gonna have dumpsters being dumped at three o'clock in the morning, the way the Alzheimer's Center is doing that. I don't think the people who are living along there right now understand what is coming at them if we move them out. The regulations right now for setbacks, ten-foot and twenty-foot for the business buildings away from a residential property line are not adequate. We have no provisions for stepping down heights to meet what is the surrounding residential areas. Any more work?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Hi, Natalie Corrigan, I'm Laura. I just have a couple of questions. Um, no worries, no RVs or boats here, okay? If you don't want to let it drive, I'm kind of being ungrateful, no boats. Mr. Dries, you said that at the fastest, this could pass in forty-five days, correct?
Yeah, I don't see how it could pass.
Yeah, but at the fastest. What do you actually envision is my, my frame of...
You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to hedge my bet here, but depends how many comments we get back. If we have five hundred comments that we have to go through, it's gonna take a whole lot longer. I know we got one comment on RVs, I got that piece. But we will still, each of these comments, we'll talk about each one of them and go through them. And if we have five hundred comments, it's gonna take a whole lot longer than, so I...
Okay, well, that's, at least to my next question, Kinsky noted that this new code was checked against the charter in the state law. How long is this charter commission going to run?
Charter commission...
The new one that you're...
The charter commission runs per the charter for maximum six months.
Okay. What happens if your new charter commission comes back and now this code doesn't jive with the new charter?
Well, it's, there's only a couple of pieces.
Yeah, there's only a couple of things in the charter that have anything to do with the planning. And it's the establishment of a planning commission, the name of the planning commission, the composition.
Actually, the way that it works is that the zoning code references the sections of the check, the charter. So whatever the charter is, is, those references are remaining the same.
Okay.
And then the only other thing that's in there, charter-wise, is the green belt. And the green belt regulations are identical.
So there's nothing the new charter commission could come up with that'll affect this, that we're gonna have to go through, is like, say, a section gets invalidated?
The only thing is if they change anything to do with the green belt language.
Does the green belt...
That's it. And I actually believe that the recommendations that we were initially talking about, everyone in this room will support.
Well, I don't think the green belt can be touched, so that's just my question.
It was clarification of, of the uses of the green belt, where the comment was made that there's been inconsistency about, yeah, that's what it is.
Some of the green belt, some of the green belt borders the woods. So it's a green belt to a green belt. Which means you can't use a green belt that is personal property, because somebody declares that something adjoining the woods can't be used. Doesn't make any sense.
Well, is the woods part of Wynton Woods then? Or they, so then they would have a say also, whereas you...
Belt, the green belt.
Let me just, let me just say this, I don't, I don't wanna open this can of worms. All, all, the purpose, which I hope the charter commission considers, is that what I was attempting to do was have the zoning code more clearly defined for how the green belt can be used for that that is publicly owned and that is privately owned. Because there are parts of the green belt that are owned by individual property owners, and that's not clear in the code, and that's what we're trying to do, is make that clear. But, but it's not, but we can't touch that, that's, that's gonna be chartered on you.
And that's what's been inconsistently administered over time.
Well, yes, it's, it's very complicated, there's some, been some legal rulings.
Yeah, there's a Supreme Court case.
Yeah, there's a Supreme Court case on one side.
What'd you want, what's, what's the note on it?
Ohio or...
Lutheran church down by the... I think there's also Ohio Supreme Court. It went up three times, and it's been a long time ago, it's at least thirty or forty years ago, when they initially tried to, developers came in and tried to develop the green belt, and the question's whether they could or couldn't. And since a lot of money was involved, they took it all the way up to the Ohio Supreme Court. And it may have gotten into the federal court, where they protected, the courts protected the green belt. Well, in one case they did, in one case they didn't.
They did away with the green belt, the green belt, Maryland.
Oh, this is, that's another issue.
Let's get off the green belt, we ain't touching it. Mr. Halter?
Jeff Halter wants to say a very different thing. I think public meetings are great, and I think it's great that everybody gets a chance to express themselves. As community development chair, I have, and as a citizen, I have some thoughts. I have a concern, I talked with a neighbor that's concerned about the four-foot vehicle graphic. I agree with Jason, I think it's, it's boxing in somebody, and that's really impeding them to do what they do best. I designed vehicle graphics, I don't think one of them fits in that criteria. So I really would cast my thoughts against adjusting that or adjusting that. We also need to look, my takeaway, kind of urban aerial view, is that city, the village center needs to be looked at very, very closely. I, I know that this is, you know, the format to bring that up, but I think that how we rezone that and some of the concerns that were brought up are very legitimate. And I agree on the RV front that I think it's disproportionate focus. I've been here since ninety-three, which almost seems like nothing compared to when I should have been here. But I can tell you that when I first got here, our gutter broke, and within two days I received a letter saying, "Hey, picture gutter." I almost thought people were planted on the rooftops watching my gutter. Now I see whole forests growing out of gutters, I do see a number of vehicles that have not moved for years, that are just eyesores, that are much bigger issues than an RV that's ready for a family to camp in. Also, I'd like to just, my final question or thought, is just how the methodology of decision-making will flow from here as you take this in. Do you feel, being a part of community development, that, you know, I know the council will do more, I hope, and just field this document and say, "Okay, this is your recommendation role," because I think we'll have to have some discussion. But I just was curious to know, how do you incorporate this and how do you go about making decisions, you know, versus the data and information you got from...
Oh, we, we do evaluate it and we do vote on it.
Okay. Well, and I just, I wasn't sure how that...
Have a great debate.
Yes.
And, but I guess the other thing I'll say about that from a community development standpoint is I think it's negligent for me not to be involved in that process.
Well, you'll, you'll get your chance. You will be, you'll have your chance, but you're not on the planning mission. And the charter, you know, it really specifically places the responsibility for the development of this document with the planning commission. The planning commission gets done with it, and then basically the planning commission's done with it, they give it to council, and it's council's document to deal with. You don't have, the council doesn't have to go back to planning commission and say, "Oh, we wanna change something." Council's welcome to change what they please. Council has the ultimate responsibility. You know, in the charter, the council is supreme in this village. Okay, so...
Thank you very much. And I also appreciate the work that's going into it, so I think it's win chivalry.
Can I just say one other thing? I think that there's been a lot of discussion tonight, and a lot of issues that the commissions need to follow up on. But as a citizen, I also feel that with the power that the five council members have to pass something that large and that many changes within a village that affects a lot of people that live here, I think the village people should have the right to vote on passing that whole document. I don't think it should be the power of only five people, because you were, wait a minute, you were voted in by the people of Green Hills for that responsibility.
Stacy, Stacy, I just wanna again make this process real clear, the planning commission is not voted on by the people.
I'm not saying that.
The, the planning commission is appointed, then there are six village council people, and I've heard some, from a couple of them, that feel that, that perhaps this, the ultimate decision may best lay in the hands of the voters. But that's up to council to make that decision. And when council passes this, or doesn't pass it, or whatever council does... the, you know, you, the citizens always have the right for referendum. Right, I believe that's the right, uh, the right one. To, uh, to take that vote out of the hands. That's what happened with Senate Bill Five last year. The House instead passed it, the governor signed it. And before the law went into effect, sufficient signatures have been collected. Now, you know, I sense a, a lot of, a fair amount of support for referendum. And I, I believe council can, uh, go ahead and decide to do that. I don't know, I'd have to ask the law director.
I know, I know a little bit about it. The reason, under statute, state law, the process you call for amendments doesn't allow people to vote. They vote initial adoption, zoning. And then any amendments, they're, they're, you know, going forward. Follow the process that we're following. Public hearing by planning commission, recommendation of planning commission to council, council public hearing, council decision. And if they wanted, if, if the citizenry wants to challenge that, it's referendum. That's the process laid out in state law as well as a mirror in, in the village regulations. The thing that I will offer, and there may be some folks in the room who aren't very knowledgeable about zoning. There's been a couple of comments made about interpretations of the code that I think with some one-on-one discussion, I can help them better understand and maybe, you know, clarify some misunderstandings. So you are absolutely free, if you wanna list my phone number on the webpage where people are going to find the regulations. I'd be glad to talk to you one-on-one. For those people who have questions. I'm delighted, quite frankly, that the, the comments about RVs, uh, because there, there's a lot of things in the code. And I would tell you that again, uh, while we're not trying to make Green Hills, the suggestion from me as your consultant was not to try to make Green Hills like every other place. That was not the intent. The intent was related to redevelopment, uh, visions of the village laid out in the conference of plan as well as a number of regulations that were just completely merely outdated. And, um, so what happens is that, and I would tell you that it, it's great to have good neighbors and take care of their property and help each other out. I think that's wonderful, I would have a neighbor like that as well. But what happens is that when you have an owner who doesn't cooperate, that doesn't wanna, that, well, doesn't wanna be a good neighbor, and then you're left with no power. So complaints that come to the village cannot be acted on because you don't have the regulations to deal with it. So, uh, it's not necessarily the goal to be punitive against anyone. However, when you're the person who lives next to that property, your, your vision of the situation changes dramatically. So, um, again, as you laid out, you know, council can change these regulations that we can perform as they go forward.
I think you gotta check with your law director whether you can put people in issue or not because you're effectively putting in a brand-new code.
You cannot do that, I can tell you, we've had discussions.
I'm telling you that they've gotta check with the law director because they're...
All right, Andy, we will, we'll, thank you for hearing our grievances. You're appreciated.
I don't really see them as grievances, I just hear them as information that we should consider. I wanna go with word-based.
All right, is there anyone else?
Can I just add to you before we leave tonight? First off, thank you for listening to us. And also, um, again, Glenn, you stated before about us being unique. Can we just, you know, when you think about these changes, really just, really try to remember that we are unique. And, and we wanna stay unique. And, and there's something that's just stuck in my head this whole night, it's really bothering me. And Judith, when you were speaking earlier, you kinda got a chuckle when you referred to, you know, this has been a fun thing, like, when you were working on a, creating a homeowners association. I don't ever wanna think of this as, as a homeowners association favor. If I wanted to live in an area with a homeowners association, I would've done that a long, long time ago.
Actually...
I wanna keep this a unique community.
Actually, to clear the air.
Not again.
My comment was made because I, at some times
I know.
in our review processes privately, would, I remember chuckling to myself with an attorney as I...
And I heard, it was a general statement, I hadn't even made a comment.
And, and so there are reasons why all the rules and, um,
Right.
standards are set.
Reading somebody's...
Exactly. And it's turning, yeah, into, these rules are turning into... Oh, well, you didn't want it to.
Just trying to remember when you're going, you're just... What do you mean?
Another game, Paul.
And Luke Paul. And Luke Paul.
All right, well, can, there's no one else? If you, if you thought it, you'd make a motion to adjourn. A second.